Yeah, so if you wanted to do anything here, I'll show be here. Okay.
We ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees order on Tuesday, January 2, 2024 at 6:31 PM. I will call the role.
We lost our fiscal officer here.
Engelman.
Here.
Sweattick is here.
Fiscal Officer Cathcart Wood is here, but not in the room.
We will wait a moment for her to return.
We have our chiefs here.
Here she is.
Of course. Yes, everybody to join in honoring the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I would like to move to approve the minutes for the December 19, 2023 Records Commission Special Meeting.
Second. That was between you and I.
All in favor? Yes. Move to approve the minutes for the December 19, 2023 Regular Trustee Meeting.
Can we table that one?
We can table that.
If we could table that because I read through it and I did have um a change, but I did not write it down.
I will resend that motion. And we have a couple of special guests this evening. Thank you for coming on, gentlemen. One and Crati. Yes, and you, I do not know, sir. I'm gonna.
Oh, we don't have my. Hold off on putting them out.
But we will. Yeah.
I just have one thing to announce.
All right. This is in regards to the ODOT work that's going to take place for the sidewalk lighting. If you would continue.
Correct. Yep. So as Jack said, I'm here on behalf of ODOT in regards to the signal improvement project there at this intersection. In regards to the project, they're seeking to give a standard highway easement. I do have an acreage here of .003 acres on is a small little corner. Easement for.
I'm sorry, but I stated incorrectly at the last meeting. I got 300 for somewhere. I think it's about 180 square feet. It works out too.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So it's a very small area. They're seeking to get that for the improvement there. So they're changing the signals from a the cross that they have now. It's going to be basically a double pole. So a pole with two overhangs at this corner as well as the other corner. So instead of it being on the lights on a string, it's going to be the single, single base at each corner. In regards to where they're seeking to get that easement is actually on the other side from where we are, where the historical society is now. And in that location, they're only going to put a light for the crosswalk. And I just want to know if you guys have any questions or concerns in regards to the project. It is to improve that intersection, update the signals as well as basically provide lighting in there for safety purposes.
So it is traffic signals in addition to the crosswalk lighting.
Correct. Yeah. So they are changing and it's going to be updated to a radar system. I think currently have out there, maybe it's a coil detection. It's going to be radar.
That was, they told me that one was for up on Stony Hill. You're doing that over here as well?
Correct. Yes. Okay. As part of this project. Yeah, and I do have a packet of the information, I believe it was sent to your office a couple of months ago, but I do have some updated plans as well as okay, basically what you can, what you can expect to see out there. So provide a visual for you guys to.
And my understanding is you've spoken with the prosecutor's office now and
Correct.
made the adjustments to the documents that he requested. Yes. Okay.
Yep. I do have those today as well as I have the updated easement with the basically naming you guys all as the trustees and made the changes that he requested.
Okay. And I, I had spoken with you also about the possibility of doing some type of not so modern lighting that was, did you look any further into that? Were you able to?
Correct. Yeah, we looked into it and actually looked at the intersection that you spoke of up in Medina. So we did check on that. We're going to do the best we can to get that approved. The only thing is the extra cost that it would take and we can get that number, but they may ask the township to do that if we can't get it approved that way, just because it is, you know, public funded project. They don't see it necessary or needed to do the more historical look on those. They just want to keep it as the typical ODOT standard traffic signal. Basically what they're doing at four other locations down that corridor.
And where is the intersection that you're referring to?
Well, there are actually two. I don't know. Are you involved in one on Stony Hill or no?
I'm not.
Okay. So there's one at Stony Hill.
No, I mean with the style of the light that you are.
Oh, those are up in Medina on North Court.
Okay.
When they found 42 when they did, they did all that. They I don't know how to explain it.
I think the one you're speaking of, the more.
They just have an older look.
Yeah, Victorian look.
Yeah, the lamp.
I believe they're green, but I.
I think they're black. The ones on 42.
Yeah, the one, it's what I'm thinking. They're black and they.
Correct. The ones that you're speaking of, these ones are going to be kind of what you have out here.
The color of the illumination for the sidewalk.
It's going to be the LED, the white.
The bright white?
Correct. Yep. So they do want to stick to their standard drawings and their, their standard basic design. We can ask all that stuff to see if they can change it, but they do try to follow the new manual in regards to the standards of drawings that they have. But we can always ask, you know, this is, you know, this is to kind of start the conversation with you guys to see what you guys want to see out there and see, you know, what we can do to get, you know, your, your voice heard in this matter.
I'm sorry, did we say the timeline when, when this is going to be happening?
So end of spring, beginning of summer. So they want to put it out to good contract bid end of April.
So can we ask for the yellow lighting as opposed to the bright white?
We can ask for anything.
Yeah. Is that something you want me to take back to?
I, I.
I mean.
Heard in that area.
Yeah, just because it's the downtown center historic, historic. Thank you.
Yeah, and we are going to check on the design as well.
Okay.
And I did actually bring drawings from their manual that do show that, that kind of look that you're looking for.
Okay.
So you guys can look at it, see if that's, you know, what you want. We can circle and send it back to them and say, hey, this is the style we want.
Okay.
Oh, that would be great. So I can actually see what we're talking about.
Yeah, I do have those and I do have the updated plans as well for you guys. I can leave those here. Or if you guys have time afterwards, I can go through it all in detail with you. Whatever works best for you.
I don't even know if you want to stay that long.
Whoever works well for you.
I hope not.
Yeah, or we can set up a time to where we come in at a different time. It works well for everybody, but I do have those, those two packets of paperwork here.
Do you have any other extra questions right now?
I don't. I'd like to see what, you know. I don't.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, if anything comes up, you guys have questions or concerns.
Perfect.
Everything's in here. And I know Jack has my contact info. First name's Rocky, R O C K Y. And last name's Crati, C R O T T Y. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Yeah.
Please. Any good news?
I do. I have lots. Well, I have, I have nothing from the agenda, but for the good of the order, most of you are aware that six, eight weeks ago, we had our baseball fields up at Quebec Fields turfed. I am happy to let you know that Patrolman Goff has figured out who did that. They've admitted to it and they will be held responsible to repair the damages and get the fields back up in good order by spring. So great. Hands off, yeah, hats off to Patrolman Goff.
That's great.
You did a great job.
Detective Goff. You figured it out.
That's all I got.
Well, that's a nice note. Wow.
Well, I just actually, I just found out a little while ago.
That's why you're grinning. You had a heads up. All right.
That's all I got.
Great news.
Anything else? For the police chief? Welcome to leave. I will take you up on that. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year and look forward to the coming year. Chief.
Good evening. I request move firefighter paramedic Brad Polish from the EMT pay of 1623 to his medic rate. That's the new rate set today in the organizational minutes. He passes paramedic program. There are a couple other waiting to take their test on availability of test sites.
Done that?
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Next is accept presentation of firefighter paramedic Jared Bonnet, Logan Davis. They're both working multiple jobs. Jared Bonnet, his dad builds race cars and Jared's a master welder. So he's going to be helping in the family business. So his time plus Brunswick's got their overtime. So they're, they're, he's eating that up over there.
Both of them have full time.
Yep. Yeah, they, they, yeah.
In other cities. So, so moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, one other item. Request to enter into the one year service agreement to ESO for our emergency reporting software for $2,741.14. This is where we do all our fire reports to the state of Ohio, track all our training records, inspections and everything like that. This year will be last, probably last year with them. They got bought out by ESO and they're discontinuing emergency reporting. So we're looking at other options going forward.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
That's all I have.
Helping us later from guys. All right. Thank them. Anybody else have anything for the fire? I would. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, you guys, too.
Service.
Um, I really don't have anything for the meeting tonight. Just one little update. I just want everyone to start thinking about, you know, we about Bethany Lane, you know, let's start getting in talking with Lewis and Land. You know, we'll just kind of figure that out as we go. And now, as I said, just start thinking about that way we can think about when we want to get it out. Get that one done this year. So.
Did you send me the contact info for Broadview?
I will.
Okay.
If I didn't, I'll look, but not a problem.
Okay.
Um, while under service, Mike brought to our attention that we had the wrong pay rate for Rob Noel. So he could make a motion to amend the organizational minutes to, it was a carryover from did he get a raise in mid anniversary raise or something?
Like six months or something.
Yeah. So it should be rather than 2415, his new age should be 2475. Thank you, Mike.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm sorry. What was that?
It was, it was noted as 2422 in the organizational draft and it should have been 2475. Thank you.
Anything else for Mike? Well. Have a good night. Thank you.
Happy New Year, Mike.
Cemetery. I think we have a deed design. I could have a couple of folks come up to witness. Anyone?
Jeff's here with his pen. And Jim.
I'm going to let you fill these in because your handwriting is halfway decent.
Was it one?
Two.
Do I have to write second? Second day of January. Do I have to write the word or just the number? Never mind.
I would just write the number. Not mess with you.
I'm gonna use my pen. Is that okay?
You came prepared. I like it.
This is my special pen.
That's when it's a zoning plot.
That's for plastic.
Yeah.
You don't ever want to sign it with not the right pen, trust me. Three precautions are. Thank you, Mr. Who. Thanks, bud. Well, now, let's see, trustee Engelmann.
So these two items are just informational purposes. The, there is a some zoning resolution text amendments that are going to County Planning Commission tomorrow night for review. And then to zoning commission on Thursday, there's already a public hearing scheduled for them. So just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and which means we'll probably be seeing something down the road ourselves and we'll need to schedule a public hearing. And second is the Estates of Prairie Vista, which was formerly known as Hollow at Willow Lake, which is the 21 lot subdivision off of 130th that is going to County Planning Commission for a preliminary plan review tomorrow night as well. That's it.
Trustee Ashrell.
Okay, I am just giving everybody the official reminder that Kimball is delayed by one day because of the holidays, same as last week. So it will be picked up on Saturday this week, not Friday. Um, and then I wanted to talk to you both about scheduling a work session specifically to start discussing our wish list items. I was thinking towards the end of January, if we could kind of come prepared with some of the projects we're thinking of with estimates. Is that a realistic request?
Yeah. What do you want to do on the 30th?
30th of January. We can do that if that works.
Is that Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yep.
Um, are you both okay with doing like a four o'clock work session?
Yes.
It's fine for me.
So that way it gives us enough time to get our list together and then also maybe get like a rough idea, like a rough quote or something from contractors. So helps us with planning. All right. Um, I would like to make a motion. So I'm not sure if you'll remember this. I talked about it last year that moving forward in February, we are going to start getting charged monthly rates for the township email accounts. So last year we suspended a bunch of them. Actually, I think two years we suspended a bunch of them also. So because so many of them have been suspended at this point for two years or more in accordance with our records retention policy, we can now delete those accounts. So I would like to make a motion to delete the email account for Becky Let's Go, Christine Miller, Jim Burns, Ray Shulte, Rick Miller, and William Spellman effective January 5th of this year.
Second.
Does Bill Spellman have any, is that a separate email account?
Separate. This was hit. So he had the HTZ. This is not the HTZ. This was, this one has been suspended.
Since he was chair.
At the last time, the last time anyone logged into it was February 29th of 2020.
Okay.
So, yeah. Okay. So we will do those on January 5th. Delete them. I will contact Brian Letco and then I would like.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Thanks. She didn't even vote on it. I'm just moving along. I would like to make a motion to suspend the email of Melissa Augustine and the virtual tech help.
Second, and what is that?
The virtual tech help is one that was created when they created the Zoom when they first went to virtual and we've never gotten an email to that email address, like literally ever. So we want to suspend it so that we want to suspend it so that we'll be able to delete it.
I was going to send one right now, but okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. I would like to make motion to approve the annual renewal of the township Zoom account at a cost of $149.90 for the year.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Hi. And then I wanted to talk to you both about and see your thoughts on bringing back the trustees' corner. I met with the Hinkley Record this summer and they said that if the township decided to start participating in that again, they would love to have us back and they would give us that spot back for the 300 word article that goes in there. Wondering your thoughts on that?
Well, I certainly think that it's important that this body communicates directly out to the community regarding its activities in a neutral fashion as opposed to having others report on our behalf. So I think people look forward to the Hinkley Record as a resource for what is happening here. And so I think, you know, we should be able to directly express what we are doing.
Agreed. And it's a way I think that people feel connected to the township government when they are actually getting an update from the trustees every, every month. So it's something that I think that people miss having in there. I know it was something I read it every month when it would come before I was a trustee. Now I don't have to read it. I know what it's going to say, but.
So what would be the parameter for content?
Um, I think that it should be, well, I'm going to take it a step further also. And what I would like to see done, I've given it a lot of thought because Jack, I know something that was really important to you was driving usage to the website also, right? And the trustees' corner, you know, the one thing about the trustees' corner is we say it comes out at the beginning of the month. But a lot of times the cutoff is before even our second meeting of the month. So by the time you're getting that, it's kind of outdated information. But if it's a recap of what has been discussed in the meetings and what the trustees are working on, then yeah, it might be a couple of weeks delayed, but it still is better than nothing for the people that don't follow our meetings, don't look at the the meeting minutes, watch the YouTube. So it's still better than nothing to give factual information. But what I was thinking, what if we created kind of like, maybe it's not the right word, but like a blog per se on our website so that now we're writing one after every meeting. It's a recap after every meeting.
That becomes a public record.
But it's.
But you, you wouldn't have people respond to it, correct?
Just on our website, have it on our website. So people can't respond to anything on our website anyways. It's just an article that we're putting up there.
So is the trustees' corner considered a public record?
When you submit it to them, it becomes one. Yes.
Uh huh.
Yeah, any, any, really any public.
Transition.
Yeah. If it's, if it's novel, one of a kind, if it's a redundant or repetitive of something else, then there's a main source. But if it's new content, it's a public record.
If it is shared from our website, that is not a public record. Just us putting it on the website is a.
Yeah, if it is new content, it is a public record. If it's created content, it is a public record.
Right.
If it's just something copied from an original public record, then you have the original and it's just a secondary record.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think you were trying to differentiate between us putting something on the website and then Mr. Pearl copying it and distributing it. Is that what you're saying? Or are you saying that's not a public record if he uses it and sends it out?
Right, right.
Yeah. But the actual action of us posting it there isn't in and of itself a public record.
Yes.
Unless it was copied from something we have in-house.
But no, no, if it's, if you come up with a blog statement and you put it on our website, it becomes a new public record. It doesn't exist anywhere else. It's, it's new. But if you take this agenda and you copy it on the website, it is not a public record because this is the main public record. But if you create new content, it is a public record. It has to be maintained and we may, if you want to pursue that, we would may have to review our, our public records, retention, destruction documents to make sure that it falls within a retention period. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
So just for theoretical purposes, if, if you had a posting to the website, if you want to call it blog, and then you took, and that becomes a new public record, then you took exactly what's there and submitted that to Hinkley Record for trustee corner, then that would not be a public record.
Correct. But if you're posting, it's like Facebook. If you're posting new content on a regular basis, that becomes a public record that needs to be retained. And what you do want to avoid at all costs is having other parties add to your public record.
Right. And that's, and okay, I ignore the word blog. I, I'm just, I'm you want, I want to do an update. Yeah, I want to do an update, like a, an article. Let's say that, that goes, you know, we used to have.
Now we, on there, we have news.
Well, we used to have on there the tab for the newsletter, but the newsletter went away. So we lost that tab. So I'm just thinking something like that. If you put that in there, it's a way that you can get out kind of like a CliffsNotes version of the meeting that it's easier to read something like that, 300 words, than go through and read through all the meeting minutes. it's easier to read something like that, 300 words than go through and read through all the meeting minutes.
I would still like to think on it.
Okay. Well, okay. Um, do we want to think on everything, like trustees corner, everything? Want to table it for the next meeting?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Then that is all I have.
Okay. ODOT was already here. I would like to move to approve the Rocky River Watershed Council annual membership renewal and supporting donation for 2024 in the amount of $500.
Do you have a, do you have an application?
I do.
That motion?
It is.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
And then we had we had Jeff Kenny has agreed to and signed a separation agreement, resigning his position with Hinkley Police. And I will move for resolution to authorize payment to Jeff Kenny upon the completed execution of the separation agreement between Jeff Kenny and Hinkley Township and the subsequent retirement of Jeff Kenny. Pay of 37.5 hours of administrative leave is remaining leave balances shall be paid in accordance with the Hinkley Township Patrolman's collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please. Yes.
Asher.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes. What was the total hours on that? 37?
37.5. Before I give it back to Martha, I'll move to pay the bills in the amount of $155,221.09.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Martha? Anybody from the public? Where's last? Nothing else for the good of the order. I will move to adjourn at 7:03 PM.
Second.
My Asher, all in favor?
Hi.